This meeting is called to order. Good evening. This is the April 9th, 2024, meeting of the Shoesbury Select Board. As a preliminary matter, I'm Teresa Flynn. I am acting as chair for this meeting. Please permit me to confirm that all members and persons anticipated on the agenda are present and can hear me. Members, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Beth Cassavant, who is participatingly... So, Mrs. Cassavant is participating remotely. John Samia.
Present.
Michelle Conlin.
Present.
Michelle Conlin is also participating remotely. Carlos Garcia.
Present.
And myself, Teresa Flynn. I am indeed here. Staff, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Keith Baldinger, Assistant Town Manager for Operations.
Present.
David Snowden, Assistant Town Manager for Administration and Finance.
Present.
Justin Dobson, Assistant to Town Manager.
Present.
This open meeting of the Select Board is being conducted in a hybrid format consistent with Chapter 2 of the Acts of 2023, House Bill 3548, signed into law by the Governor on March 29th, 2023. The Act, which you can find posted with adjunctive materials for this meeting, allows public bodies to meet in a hybrid format and suspends the requirement that a quorum of the body and the chair be physically present at the meeting location. For this meeting, members of the Select Board are convening in person and via Google Meet. Members of the public and/or parties with a right and/or requirement to attend this meeting may attend this meeting in person. Lastly, each vote taken in this meeting will be conducted by roll-call vote. I will call on each member by their last name, and I'm not trying to be rude, just trying to be efficient. So, last name. Okay. Well, that will get started. The first item on our agenda is to approve the bills, payrolls, and warrants.
Move approval. Second.
This requires a roll-call vote. If you are in favor, signify by saying aye; if opposed, say nay. Cassavant?
Aye.
Samia?
Aye.
Conlin?
Aye.
Garcia?
Aye.
And Flynn, aye. So voted. Item number two is to approve the minutes of the February 8th, 2024 Roundtable, March 21st, 2024 Roundtable, March 26th, 2024 Meeting, and April 2nd, 2024 Workshop.
Move approval. Second.
This requires a roll-call vote. Cassavant?
Aye.
Samia?
Aye.
Conlin?
Aye.
Garcia?
Aye.
And Flynn, aye. So voted. Item number three is announcements and reports. I have one announcement, and it is a reminder that curbside collection of yard waste begins this month. Yard waste collection began yesterday, April 8th, and will continue through April 12th. It will also be available during the week of April 22nd through April 26th. Residents should leave their yard waste in 30-gallon paper lawn and leaf bags at the curb on their scheduled collection day. Do any board members have any other announcements? Staff?
I have one.
Mr. Baldinger?
So, in an effort to continually improve our trash and recycling program, DPW is conducting a survey on the Pay-as-you-throw-bag program. The town has purchased about 1,000 wave-top-style bags to give away while conducting a satisfaction survey. So, the wave-top bag has handle ties that are cut into the bag as opposed to the drawstring ones that you're currently purchasing now, and so we're looking for resident feedback about these bags. These bags are also a thicker product than what we're currently selling, and regardless of what bag we stick with in the future, on July 1st, all bags will be made thicker to hopefully improve strength. So, the test bags come in a little roll like this with the QR code on it for the survey, and residents can come to Town Hall and pick them up at DPW counter or the Town Manager's office. They'll also be available at the Senior Center Customer Service Counter and at upcoming events, including most... Soonest ones upcoming are the Men's Club on Thursday at the Senior Center and then Arbor Day on 4/27. So, we really appreciate residents coming and taking a look at these and trying them out with your trash and responding to the survey, so hopefully we can improve the customer satisfaction.
I anticipate that will be quite welcome by a lot of people. Will the town also post this on the website, Facebook post, just to get the word out a little bit?
Yes, so it'll all be posted on our website, and there'll be a newsflash going out to residents on Thursday, the 11th.
Great. Item number four is the Town Manager's Report. Mr. Baldinger is currently the Acting Town Manager while Mr. Mizakar is out. I'll turn it to you.
Nothing to report.
Nothing to report. Okay. Item number five is public comment pursuant to Select Board Policy 31, to offer citizens the opportunity to provide public comments during Select Board meetings on matters within the Board's authority. No one has signed up for public comment this evening, and as always, we remind the public that you have the opportunity to sign up by the end of business on the Monday prior to our Tuesday meetings, and we encourage those who are interested to do so. Item number six on our agenda is a meeting with Trish Farnsworth, Attorney, and Robert Mulcahy, Proposed Manager for Fine Wine and Spirits LLC, DBA Total Wine Spirits Beer &amp; More, 87 through 97 Boston Turnpike, for a change of manager to their all-alcohol package storage license.
Good evening. This is Trish Farnsworth, and with me is Bob Mulcahy. This is, you know, pretty straightforward, change of manager. Mr. Mulcahy has great experience. He's been with Total Wine for, I believe, years now, prior experience, many years in retail, is TIP certified, and, you know, he can answer any questions that you may have.
Is he present in the meeting as well that we just can't see?
Hi, yes, I am here.
Great. Thank you. Nice to meet you.
Good to meet you.
My understanding is that all of the required paperwork and the query check and everything has passed. I ask board members if there are any questions that we have. With that said, then I will entertain a motion.
Move to approve Massachusetts Fine Wines and Spirits LLC, DBA Total Wine Spirits Beer &amp; More, change of manager application to its Section 16 All-Alcohol Package Store License.
Second.
Okay, this requires a roll-call vote. Cassavant?
Aye.
Samia?
Aye.
Conlin?
Aye.
Garcia?
Aye.
And Flynn, aye. So voted. Good luck, Mr. Mulcahy.
Thank you.
Thanks very much.
Item number seven is to review an act on the proposed water rate adjustment for fiscal year 2025. I know, Mr. Snowden, you are going to help summarize this. Is Mr. Riley also?
He should be here. The sewer commissioner were meeting beforehand, so I'll be able to answer most of the questions regarding the finances, and if there's anything else, we can go from there.
Okay.
So, last year, the Board adopted the 2023 Water Fund Financial Plan, which provided a five-year lookout and financial plan for the enterprise. The first year, a rate of 3.5% was adopted, and ensuing years, about 5% was projected going forward. Based off of the current revenue coming in and the projected expenditures, and as identified in the financial plan, the recommendation at this point in time is a 5.01% increase for FY '25 over the current rates of FY '24. This is a total aggregate increase of 1.51% over FY '24. And what I'm going to do is go over a couple other highlights at this point in time. I did want to note FY '24 included a credit to those eligible individuals who qualified for personal exemptions through the assessor's office, and at present, there are 200 water utility accounts who receive $80 a year in credits towards their water portion of their utility bills, which amounts to approximately $16,000 a year. On the sewer side, just as a reference, there are 169 accounts as well. So, there are some accounts that don't have water, but they have sewer, and vice versa. Based on the 2023 adopted financial plan, the reserve account in the form of the special stabilization is to be nearly fully funded by FY '28. Currently, we have $785,495 in this fund. The financial plan outlined that the retained earning balance following any annual appropriation could be considered part of the reserve totals to ensure that we had funds when necessary. And we're projected to have a total of reserves and retained earnings of $3.7 million at the end of this fiscal year, and by FY '28, $2.175 million. And then, if we continue, on page five of the memo that was shared, we outline a five-year capital plan, which includes the appropriation for FY '24, and then the out year is projected to FY '25. The projects highlighted in red are items that are debt-funded, so these are not the full expenses that are reflected in the actual operating budget, but they instead are incurred through the indirect costs as the debt. The annual capital numbers are around $100,000 a year, and it's some consistent work we do at the Poorbrook Farm and ongoing vehicle replacement. On page six, we have the projected water rates from FY '24 through FY '28. The intent is every year to review them in hopes that we can be lower than what we initially anticipated. We do not want to go above what was a part of the initial plan, and if we're able to lower the rates, we certainly will. Page seven outlines the bill impacts for our largest customer class, which is residential condominium users. About 75% of residential usage ranges from 0 to 17,000 gallons a quarter, and for individuals that fall in that range, they will see a 4.99% increase in FY '25 or $5.06 on their quarterly water bill. That is a pretty cursory overview, and I'm definitely happy to jump in and answer any more financial detail questions if necessary.
Board members, any questions, comments?
Thank you. Just commenting a question. For PFOS, I know it's evolving, but do we know any other communities that have started with a PFOS plant at all?
This is a big question that I can reach out to Superintendent Riley on to get a better answer. I do know that we were looking at some other town meetings that have received SRF funding for PFOS treatment plants, and there are a handful in the area that have received funding. I'm not sure where they're at at this point in time.
Okay. Understood. Thank you. And then, just to reiterate your point, as you have on page seven, where 75% of the residential usage between 0 and 17,000 gallons, so on the chart here, you have if someone's a quarterly consumption of $5,000, it's a difference year over year by quarter of 69 cents.
That is correct.
All the way to the, as you had mentioned, 75% of consumers at 17,000, while it is 4.99%, it's $5 a quarter. So, just to put it in context, that 5%, depending on what the number is, can be a big number. Here, it's $5 a quarter, so not minimizing impact on people, but a large majority of people, it's $20 a year, based on historical information. So, you had put that out there, just wanted to state that again.
Yep, great point.
Did someone raise their hand?
Beth.
Beth?
Yes, Madam Chair, it was just, it was me. I have a question for Mr. Snowden. I know that we had authorized a borrowing, and I was wondering if you could just detail how that funding has been used to date.
That's a great question, yes. Looking at the memo on page five, so far, we've borrowed 3.54 million for water main replacement projects, 200,000 for the Browning tank valves, and then the $1 million for the PFOS treatment plant design, which is well underway at this point. So, the total borrowing that we have reflected in a interest payment and debt payment for FY '25 is from a 4.7 million borrowing. We'll be accessing the market again within FY '25, or maybe towards the tail end of FY '24, for another 4.04 million, and that would be for some additional water main replacements and a significant amount of funding towards our meter replacement project, which I know Mr. Riley would certainly like to talk about if he has the opportunity as well. FY '26, again, we'll be looking to borrow another 4.6 million from that initial borrowing authorization, 3.6 of it being meters again, and 1 million for water, for well replacement. And then, that's also going to be the first year of the PFOS treatment plant design borrowing, which is a separate borrowing authorization that the community will see on the warrant this year through the State Revolving Fund.
Entertain a motion.
Move the Board approve the proposed water rate increase for fiscal year 2025.
Second.
Okay, we'll proceed to a roll-call vote. Cassavant?
Aye.
Samia?
Aye.
Conlin?
Aye.
Garcia?
Aye.
And Flynn, aye. So voted. So, item number eight is to review an act on the 2024 water restrictions in accordance with the current Water Management Act permit requirements and pursuant to Article 18 of the general bylaws. In Mr. Riley's absence, let me just note what that is. This is an annually recurring item. The water restrictions would be in place from May 1st, 2024, through September 30th, 2024. The restrictions involve limiting nonessential outdoor watering hours to before 9:00 a.m. and after 5:00 p.m. Even number addresses are able to engage in nonessential outdoor water use on Wednesdays and Saturdays, and odd number addresses are able to engage in nonessential outdoor water use on Thursdays and Sundays. Any comments or questions? Okay. I apologize, I can't see.
Ms. Cassavant?
It's Beth. It's neat. Quick question. This restriction, so I know that it rains a ton, and I know that residents will always have questions about why we put these restrictions in place when it's raining constantly. Isn't it tied to, is it our stormwater permit?
It's tied to the Water Management Act permit and the amount of water we're able to draw on any given day from all of our wells. And during the summer, water usage can be significantly higher, and there is concerns that we could run, you know, past that limit. So, it's based off the Water Management Act. I do not believe it's directly related to the stormwater permit.
Okay, thank you.
Motion?
I move to approve the water use restrictions for May 1st, 2024 to September 30th, 2024 pursuant to Article 18, Section 4 of the general bylaws.
Second.
Proceed to a roll-call vote. Cassavant?
Aye.
Samia?
Aye.
Conlin?
Aye.
Garcia?
Aye.
And Flynn, aye. So voted. Item number nine is to review an act on the recommendation and intention to lay out Puritan Street pursuant to Mass. General Law, Chapter 82, Section 22. I'm just pulling up. Mr. Truman, nice to see you. How are you?
You too. Good evening. For the record, Andy Truman, Town Engineer. So, this is the final part of the Route 20 widening and the Puritan work. I think some of the board members were on there when we did that, but when we were doing the original Route 20 widening, it became very clear early on that there was going to be some issues with that western end of Puritan Street. So, in 2019, we reached out to residents about putting in the cul-de-sac and essentially closing that off. Obviously, we received favorable approval, then went to the planning board in 2020 to get the subdivision approved, and it was basically, the work was completed in 2022 as part of the Route 20 widening and the market basket work. So, at this point, we're just looking to accept that very last piece of Puritan where we basically realigned the road and put the cul-de-sac in.
Any questions, comments? This is pretty straightforward.
Yes.
Appreciate you taking the time to come in and...
If I wasn't here, there would be questions, right?
Exactly, exactly. Apparently, Mrs. Cassavant would have had 20, so... But you're here, so I think we're good. If there are no comments or discussions, I'll entertain a motion.
Move the Board vote its intention to lay out the way as described.
Second.
Okay. Proceed to a roll-call vote. Cassavant?
Aye.
Samia?
Aye.
Conlin?
Aye.
Garcia?
Aye.
And Flynn, aye. So voted.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay. Item number 10 is to review an act to approve the updated American Rescue Act expenditure plan. And Mr. Baldinger, I believe you're going to walk us through the updates.
I am. So, we shared in your packets some spreadsheets that outline some of the ARPA funds that have been allocated, but as you all know, we received and allocated just under 11 and a half million dollars in ARPA funding. Through Phase 1 and Phase 2 allocations, we have identified about 80 items or projects to oblige those funds to. Per the federal government, we are required to expend or contract these funds by the end of this calendar year. Originally, we understood that the local assignment of these funds would be an accepted action to obligate the use of them, and we would have until the end of calendar 2026 to use them. We have been issued new guidance from the feds that we still have until the end of 2026 to use them, but they must be contracted by the end of 2024. So, with the goal of making sure we leave none of these dollars unspent, we have worked with town departments to identify about 4.2 million dollars in funding that can be reallocated from the Phase 1 and Phase 2 lists. There are about, there are six larger items that we are confident that we can get under contract prior to the end of this calendar year. Just a note, we do expect to be back before the Board in the August and potentially October timeframe to potentially reallocate ARPA funds as we expend or contract these funds and have more exact figures, so we could end up with bids that come in lower than what we've estimated and have other, or have other projects that we won't be able to complete by the end of the year. So, the six items that we're here to discuss tonight equal about, equal $4,106,000. The first of these items is $330,000 for the design and renovation of the Raystone Legion at 835 Main Street. The building will be used as, for administrative and programming space for the Recreation Department. Renovations will include building on office space and bathroom upgrades for accessibility and meeting ADA compliance. It's an area that recreation sorely needs. They're lacking admin and storage space, and they don't have their own program space currently. Number two is $1.5 million for Clue Street Sewer Work. Originally, the same amount was allocated for the Walnut Street Pump Station work, but that project will not be ready for funding until mid-2025, so the Water and Sewer Division requested that we transfer the funds to Clue Street because that project's underway and under contract. So, then, so item number three is $310,000 for school textbooks. This, as you know, was per an agreement with the Select Board and the School Committee to help improve the FY '25 budget numbers. Item number four is $200,000 for funds that will be used for a feasibility study and conceptual design plans for the DPW Space Optimization Project that we talked about at a previous meeting for 207 and 211 South Street. Item number five is $473,000. These funds will be used to replace the existing phone systems across the school department, municipal departments, and Selco. The existing system will be at end-of-life later this year and will not be supported by the end of the year, so working with IT, they've come up with a new plan going forward for a new system to carry us on. And then, finally, $1,293,000 of these funds will be used to purchase a new rescue truck for the fire department. So, we have removed that from the capital plan and utilizing ARPA funds to purchase that. So, happy to answer any questions about that.
Board members, any questions?
Madam Chair?
Mrs. Conlin?
I just have a question with the Raystone Post renovations for improving admin and programming space for the Recreation Department. I know that the Raystone Post is currently used by a large and active scout troop, and there's also veteran services that are offered through the Raystone Post, and I just want to confirm that those programs will still be able to, you know, use out those spaces as they currently do?
Yes, 100%. So, working with Laura Rossett, our Recreation Director, she and I are actually going to be meeting with those groups in the next week or so to outline our plan, but the plan is for them to continue, for the veterans to continue their meetings on a regular basis and to allow use by the scout troop to continue on.
Thank you.
Mr. Samia?
A comment and a question. So, just to put this in perspective as well, when we were allocating ARPA funds, particularly to Phase 2, where a lot of these funds are being reallocated from, we were, the goal when we allocated these funds was to positively impact as many residents as possible. When the Treasury regs came out, had to pivot a little bit, where we've still undertaken a lot of these projects, but we don't, as Keith said, we don't want to lose any of these funds either. So, we pivoted, well, we've done a lot of good things with the ARPA funds. We're pivoting towards, these are budget items that otherwise would be funded from our appropriated budget, all of these items. So, it's a planned stat, so it's, I don't want to say that the original, there were needs that we wouldn't have funded but for ARPA in some instances under the Phase 2. These are, these are going to be budget items no matter what. So, just to give context, all of these would be funded under the municipal budget. Question for, just a question, in terms of what's the positive outcome from this, Dave, in terms of what does this allow us to do in terms of policy management? Where it allow, what's the positive impact from this as well, now that we're not earmarking some of the funds towards these in the budget year? Does this help us get to any of our goals faster?
That's a great question, and indeed it does. We're able to, we're keeping the total appropriation for FY '25 very similar, and we're able to move free cash funds to our general stabilization, which will get us at policy level or just shy, 4.98% to 5% of policy level for FY '25, which in ensuing years will actually free up additional funding for the town. Instead of having to put 750 or $1 million into the general stabilization account each year, we could put a smaller amount to keep us, ourselves at policy level and use those funds for additional use going forward.
And further support our strong bond rating going forward, too.
Absolutely correct, yeah.
Okay, thank you. I just wanted to confirm that.
I agree with your comments, Mr. Samia. I think it's, when we hear dollar amounts of this size, it's important to note that while we're working quickly to ensure we don't leave money on the table, we're being very thoughtful in ensuring that these investments are made in meaningful ways where they otherwise offset a cost that would have, you know, hit our operating budget. You know, the fire truck is a perfect example. We were kind of going down a road, and then there's opportunity where, you know, we could leverage the ARPA dollars. Certainly, we saw where the textbooks for the schools was able to be taken out of the school budget, and, you know, I did want to just comment on the town-wide phone system because I think, I know I paused there, and, you know, half a million dollars is a lot of money, so what we were told is that we're very close to just not having a system where we can answer resident phone calls. And so, while we live in a world where landlines are just, you know, kind of obsolete, a business like the town is dependent on having phone systems, so the technology that we currently have is obsolete at end-of-life, and the new technology that's being brought in is, I'm not going to do it justice, web-based, it's, you know, going to ensure that residents can continue to contact town staff, but also enhance the customer experience. So, you know, if you call now, you have to wait for like 20 different, you know, phone prompts, but, you know, this will be a voice-activated or reacted system. So, I think it's important that people know that we're, we're very mindful, we're not just spending, you know, arbitrarily, but these investments are definitely going to make an impact and offset what would have otherwise been a material cost for the town. So, if there are no other comments or just, oh, sorry.
It's Beth. Oh. Oh, it's Michelle. You can go first, Michelle.
Sorry. I think we raised our hands at the same time. I just, back to the phone line, this also includes the phones for the school system as well, is that correct?
Yes.
And, okay. And that with the schools, you know, as a parent of three kids in the public school system, having phone access is critical, you know, regarding school safety, student safety. safety, student safety, absenteeism, you know, there's, it's, if anybody's ever spent, you know, five minutes in the school office, the phones ring off the hook all day long. So this is a really important investment. So, thank you.
Mrs. Casavant.
So I just wanted to note that I support this plan for the ARPA dollars. One of the things that we talked about in our workshop was, you know, making sure that when there's other, when there's other dollars that were going to be spent by different departments, that we make sure we spend them all by the deadline. And I think that, you know, there was discussion about checking in with departments to make sure that there's any leftover funding, that we know well in advance of the end of the, the calendar year, so that we don't leave any of those dollars on the table. And I think that's important for the public to know, that we are making sure to check in on each and every project that has already has an allocation, so that we are in a position to spend and utilize each of those dollars in a way that will benefit the community. One other thing that I wanted to note in this proposal is by removing the, the school textbooks from the school's budget, that three hundred and ten thousand dollars is able to reduce the bottom line of the school budget. And it's a way that it's helping us to extend the duration of the override. And I think that it's critically important to mention that at every opportunity, because we had a four-year commitment with the community for the 2021 override, and that would bring us to now. But we are able to get an additional two years out of it, and it's by making these types of decisions to use these ARPA dollars to cover one-time expenses that are able to bring down a bottom line. And just that three hundred and ten thousand dollars goes a long way towards getting us at another year out of the override. So I want to make sure I brought some attention to that.
Thank you. Entertained motion.
Sure. I move to approve the revised American Rescue Plan Act expenditure plan.
Second.
This requires a roll call vote. Casavant?
Aye.
Samia?
Aye.
Conlon?
Aye.
Garcia?
Aye.
And Flynn, aye. So voted. Item number 11 is to authorize the Superintendent of Schools to submit a statement of interest to the Massachusetts School Building Authority. So I'll provide a little background here. The Massachusetts School Building Authority, or the MSBA, has a process through which Massachusetts school districts can apply for state funding to support the construction, renovation, or repair of, of public school facilities. The process is designed to prioritize projects based on need and eligibility criteria, and a statement of interest is the first step in the process. If a statement of interest is selected for further consideration, the MSBA may invite the district to participate in a feasibility study. As a result of the pre-K through 12 space and enrollment study completed by LPA in 2022, the School Committee has identified Shrewsbury High School as a need, and the statement of interest is focused on three priority areas: to eliminate severe overcrowding, to replace and modernize the roof and HVAC systems, and to add in addition to the school in order to provide for a full range of programs. A statement of interest for Shrewsbury High School was submitted to the MSBA in 2023 and was not accepted. The School Committee voted on March 13th to resubmit for the 2024 application period, and the deadline is April 12th. I will note that submitting a statement of interest does not commit or obligate, obligate the town to any action. The reason it is on our agenda is because the statement of interest requires a vote of the Select Board to authorize submission by the Superintendent of Schools. So this would require a majority vote by our board. So I believe all board members are, are likely going to want to make statements regarding this item. So, Mr. Garcia, maybe I'll call on you to start.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Colleagues, I come at this question as a former student of the high school. During my time there, it was evident that there was an overcrowding issue. The hallways were difficult to navigate through between classes. There were several electives that I signed up for but never had the opportunity to take due to space constraints. Even parking at times was a challenge, as more and more of my peers preferred the autonomy and privilege of driving versus taking the bus. Not even 10 years later, the overcrowding issue is much worse. I know each of us has taken a tour of the school, and for me, it was eye-opening to see the facility as an outside observer. It was eye-opening to see the amount of foot traffic that made it difficult for students to get to classes. It was eye-opening to see the various rooms, computer labs, and even storage closets that were repurposed as either classrooms or office space. And it was eye-opening to hear about the inability to expand programs and electives, because I know that those opportunities are where students are able to find their passions that they will then make a career out of in the future. Expanding the high school will help alleviate these pressures. Having the honor to sit here today, I want to do what I can to ensure that those behind me are able, are also able to receive an excellent quality education in partnership with the School Committee. The needs at the high school are much greater now than when I was there, which to me underscores why the expansion is so critical. I also understand that residents across this community are really feeling squeezed from all angles. Potentially asking folks to dig deeper into their pockets is not something we take lightly. And I know for myself, I wrestled with even this question for a long time, especially when we consider the capital projects we have that we looked at at our March meeting. Looking at the bigger picture, I know our board and the town have done everything we can to stretch dollars as far as possible, to offer assistance and relief to those in our community who need it most, and to extend the life of the override that was approved by the community back in 2021. There is more work we need to do there, and I know that this board will continue seeking ways to help residents where we can through economic development and social safety net initiatives and, and other ways. Unfortunately, the high school is in a situation where we no longer can delay in addressing it. The longer we sit on this project, the higher the expenses become, and the greater the needs become. Submitting the statement of interest to the MSBA opens us up to receive support and funding this project in the future, assuming it goes through the five-to-six-year pipeline positively. Balancing all of the needs of the community, I would, I would much rather be in a position to receive additional funding for this project than to try to cover the costs for a solution ourselves at some point. This vote today is just one step in a very long and arduous process. Thankfully, there are future opportunities to reevaluate and determine our next steps as we move through the process. And I will remind folks that when the town pursued and was approved MSBA funding for the Beale School, the town decided to hold and resubmit at a later time. Community engagement is going to be critical once and if we approve this first step today, because ultimately, ultimately, it will be the voters of the community that will make the decision on this project. I will be voting in favor of submitting the statement of interest for the high school, and I hope my colleagues will join me. Thank you.
Thanks, Mr. Garcia. Mrs. Conlon?
Thank you. Our high school opened in 2002 and exceeded its design capacity shortly after it opened in 2005, which is nearly 20 years ago. Current design standards have reduced that capacity to 1,250 students. We are projected for over 1,900 students next year, 650 students over the contemporary design standards, and 34% higher enrollment than what the school is designed for. Classroom spaces are full 99% of the schedule, which does not allow for expanded class or elective offerings. With the effective loss of eligibility for Shrewsbury students to attend, to attend Assabette Vocational High School, an expansion of Shrewsbury High School would help relieve some of those space constraints that would allow our district to bring in new programming to replace some of what was lost with our eligibility for us to attend Assabette. There's no question whether our high school needs to be expanded. It's just a question of when. Costs only increase over time. So delaying the process will inevitably cost more to taxpayers. This non-binding statement of interest allows us the opportunity to have the state pay roughly half of the cost of an expansion. One of the issues I campaigned for when I was joining the Select Board was for the long-term planning of capital investment and operating cost needs. So to lay out a long-term plan of when we would need to anticipate taking on major building projects, when we would need to ask for overrides to continue to maintain the high-quality services that our community needs and expects, and how we can time those projects in a way to have the least detrimental impact on taxpayers. As Ms. Garcia noted, you know, through careful financial planning, we have been able to extend the life of the override that was passed in 2021. We have an excellent AAA bond rating in the community, and we have worked as a board on social safety net initiatives to support residents who would struggle with changes to the taxes, to their tax bill as best we can as a community. So looking at the timeline that we have presented some of our capital planning needs in our March meeting, and laying out that timeline and looking at that long-term plan of our major building projects and override needs, I really believe that now is the best time for our community to submit the statement of interest. So I will be voting in favor of signing this statement of interest.
Thank you. I'll go next. Excuse me, if I can talk. I am not in support of a statement of interest at this time, and my reason is purely financial. We had three workshops recently with the School Committee where we discussed longer-term budget planning. Our board discussed the need to cap the school's budget annual rate of increase at 4.25% in future fiscal years. We were told that this would result in cuts, primarily due to the growing needs and requirements for mandated services, special education, and English learning, cost volatility, and uncertainty around state funding. And these are legitimate challenges. My takeaway from the discussions was that it's going to be increasingly difficult to manage the annual rate of increase, and we could be faced with cuts even if we're able to increase the budget by more than 4% every year. We just went through budget hearings where we heard from every town department. Every town, every town department has unmet needs that impact our residents. We are constantly working on our fiscal stabilization strategy. We were able to extend the override for two years longer than what we pledged through sound financial management. We will need to ask the town for an operational override within the next few years. Without it, there will be significant cuts across town and school services. I am concerned with some people's willingness, and more importantly, some people's ability to pay it. I consider a successful future override critical, and I want to ensure we do everything we can to minimize the impact. With regard to the high school, we have heard a lot about the need, and I understand the logic. The school is overcrowded, so we should take advantage of potential MSBA funding to make it bigger. But no one is talking about the scope, what it would cost, and how we're going to pay for it. This expansion would be one of our town's most substantial capital projects. Based on the LPA study, we're looking at a projected 80,000 square feet, which is twice the size of the new police station. The estimated cost is around 140 million dollars. And even if MSBA were to fund, say, half of that, we could be faced with a $70 million cost for the town, if not more. And to put that in perspective, the new Beale School costs about 80 million, and this has to be paid by residents. This would be an additional financial impact equivalent to an override. That is before added operating costs such as utility and maintenance. And then we would be faced with demands to expand educational programming, so more staffing, teachers, resources, technology, more cost. As a town, we do a lot. We do more for a lot less compared to others. And I appreciate everything that our town employees do to achieve that. This is not about me not wanting to support our school community. I have three kids in the high school. This is not me disagreeing that it's overcrowded. This is about my responsibility to the community as a whole, and my concern with our residents' ability to afford it. That is why I do not want to put this process in motion by advancing a statement of interest at this time. I think we first need to ensure that our financial stabilization strategy is sustainable.
Guess I'm next.
You're next.
So I went through an analysis, a little different, some of the data points, pardon the redundancy, but I started off with, is there a need? I don't have any kids anymore in the school district. They've already finished the district. So as a resident going forward that would be responsible for this, I don't have any skin in the game, other than the fact, I'm a community resident, want the best interests for all at heart here. So where I start off. Is there a need? Using the original design capacity of 1475, as Michelle said, the high school exceeded its capacity starting in 2006. We're currently at 1,873 students. Using contemporary design capacity of 1250, the gap is more apparent. Why it's different? You ask yourself, how was education when you went to school? Compare it to today with evolving educational standards, and it becomes more apparent why space, it's additional space continues to be needed. We've seen that even with Sherwood, or as presentations have been made, the buildings that have been constructed with even the last 10 years, and a lot of it was project-based learning, we see the need for additional space. We have it there. The need's not going away. McKibben demographic study that the population's projected to continue to grow up to a high of 1,953 students, and it's going to drop down to 2031 to 1,749. So again, even if it were to drop, and we've had projections in the past where they didn't, that you still have a gap of about 500 under contemporary standards, almost 500. So is there a need? Having served on the School Committee for three terms, I can tell you that every year it was brought in front of the School Committee about the space constraints, 96% occupancy or utilization back then, and we're close to 100%. It was always discussed. So in every nook and cranny has been utilized at the high school, and, and space constraints have always been noted. So there's a need. We all recognize that. Now, the other, next question for me was, for me was, it doesn't fit in with our 2030 strategic plan. The vision developed during this engagement and collaborative process with all community stakeholder, stakeholders was as follows. Shrewsbury is a vibrant, inclusive, collaborative community where all can thrive. Increasing capacity at SHS would be in alignment with the strategic outcome areas of thriving, providing equitable educational opportunities, and exceptional, effective, long-range planning and fiscal responsibility in the sense of, we've, we've undertaken, and we did it at our March meeting, we have our strategic plan, that we have our fiscal forecast as well as a capital planning process, where we whiteboarded effectively capital projects that we expect to be needed over the next eight, 10 years. After that, it's a little more of a guess, but it's a, a recognition. So let's talk about fiscal responsibility and capital planning. So as, as Mr. Miskar stated before, the intention of capital planning is not, not to introduce capital projects in light of, basically wanting to reduce the impact on taxpayers. So understanding that there are going to be needs in the community, we've talked about additional operational overrides, but also the need for capital projects as well, but to present them in a way recognizing the financial constraints that individuals have. We don't want to price residents out of, out of the town. So we're trying to do it in the best way possible to minimize the impact to taxpayers, recognizing that there are many factors, including macroeconomic factors that are impacting our residents. We know times are tight there. Going to fiscal responsibility, 50%, up to 50%, give or take on some of the factors, would be funded by the MSBA. That would be fiscally responsible, and costs will continue to increase. There's no doubt about that. Post-COVID, supply chains, we've seen in private industry that we know, construction materials also have gone up significantly, and the prices will continue to rise, and that's the question, right? Do we want to do it today? Or if inflation continues to rise, what will the cost be? We don't know. So looking at the strategy of trying to minimize the impact to taxpayers, looking at the overall strategic plan for the town, we've done a lot about strategic planning, financial management, financial projections, capital planning. This appears to be, applying with the MSBA now would best align with our overall strategy. But again, recognizing that the macroeconomic pressures, the cost of living in town, the cost of living in the Commonwealth, continue to increase and put strains on individual budgets. We get all of that. So none of this would be done lightly. So to me, there's a need. Believe this fits in with our strategic plan, and all things considered, recognizing the potential cost is fiscally responsible. This is a decision what we're elected to do. But all we're doing tonight, and where I came back to this, was we're agreeing to submit a statement of interest to the MSBA. There's no sure thing that we can get it approved. We weren't part of the selected communities last year. There's no guarantee. In 2023, 63 statements of interest were submitted, including six, in 19 were selected, including six high schools. The age of the buildings ranged from 1922 to 2007. So we don't know whether we'll be accepted at all. And if it's not accepted in this coming year, I think we need to look at a broader strategy, saying that, hey, maybe the state doesn't feel that we're overcrowded. Maybe we're not going to be selected over the next few years. And that's something that we need to look at together with our elementary schools, and maybe do that. But as part of process, I'm I'm okay moving forward with it. I'm supporting, I wanted to say okay, supporting the statement of interest, understanding to me that this is a first step, and I want to make a decision based on the options that are actually available to us. So if the SOI, if we're invited, we still don't know what it would look like. But at that point, consistent with the increased focus on community engagement, even if we're accepted into the SOI process, I think there's so many more conversations to be had that are consistent with the community engagement that we had during the strategic planning process, and it's so vital to this. Because during the strategic planning process, we heard from residents overwhelmingly so that education was very important to them. But as discussed, we do need to balance everything, but I think it's important that if the MSBA accepts that this is a priority, overcrowding, number two, the others, I think we can, you know, discuss through. But I think we need to look at it again. This isn't the stop of the analysis. This is a more fulsome approach with community engagement, understanding the cost impact. Do we want to invest in that? There's a very fulsome process. If we're invited, again, big if, 30% last year, you have Module One, eligibility period, 270 days to achieve all of these things. Module Two, project team. Module Three, feasibility study. There are going to be so many opportunities for conversation with the community. And given that this would be an investment, what should be really putting the high school future-ready for the next 50 years. In the past, some of our projects we built to size it to, we think this is what the community will accept, but then we're not future-ready. Here, this would make us future-ready. But to me personally, the SOI is the step to understand what our option is. It's either yes or no. If we're invited in, it's not a done deal. To be consistent with the process we've undertaken, with office hours, with public participation, with the strategic plan, have as many opportunities for community engagement as possible to understand what residents want, and then we'll know what the option is. Because if the MSBA says no, it's not much to talk about. If they say yes, we'll get more clarity around what yes may mean. And then I think it's just for me personally, a more informed or sharpened conversation about what is a community we want to have, at the same time balancing the needs of overall residents. So that is why I'm in support of this. It's to me not, hey, yeah, MSBA says yes, we're done. I think there's a lot of engagement that has to happen. I think there's a lot of collaboration with the residents that needs to happen. But to move forward to see if it's even an option, I think I would like to see that. Last year, 30%, again, six high schools. We may or may not get it. And if we don't get it, I think another conversation has to be had. But if we do, multiple conversations to be had, and that's what I want to assure everybody, that this is just merely, this is procedural, and there's a lot more to talk about if it moves forward, but it gives us a lot more to talk about if we know this answer. So for that reason, I'm in support of it.
Thank you, Mr. Samia. Mrs. Casavan?
Thank you, Madam Chair. So I appreciate the comments of my colleagues, and I know that each of you went through an exhaustive process to arrive at your final decision, and I have done the same. We make a lot of decisions in this role, some more consequential than others. For the past several months, we've been immersed not only in this decision, but in budget discussions and decisions over FY '25 and beyond. We've had three workshops with the school committee and several workshops with our board. Mr. Mizikar and Mr. Snowden provided us with an interactive budget model, allowing us to understand the impact of all possible scenarios and find a path to extend the 2021 operational override for two more years. Mr. Baldinger identified townwide capital projects and associated costs, allowing us to create a timeline for these projects alongside the need for another override in an effort to moderate the impact on resident tax bills. I recognize the severe and persistent overcrowning at the high school and understand from regularly watching school committee meetings, as well as having a student at the high school and touring the building during school hours, that the impacts are extensive. Last year, I voted to support a statement of interest. We are now one year closer to needing to ask the community to support an operational override. Our agreement said we would not be back for four years, and we will exceed that promise. But funds are not limitless, and the town is not exempt from the rising costs of doing business. Our current override model is designed to provide stable, reliable funding to operate our schools and municipal departments. By asking for $9.5 million in 2021, we were able to create an override stabilization fund, and we were able to address the fiscal cliff that burdened our community for decades. For this model to work as intended, subsequent overrides are necessary. Based on forecasting done by staff in the fall of 2026, we may need to be asking an override question to avoid significant reductions in school and municipal services. I have two choices before me tonight, yes or no. In a perfect world, I would say yes to everything that has the potential to make our town better and improve the daily lives of our residents. But strategic choices need to be made. We can't be all or do all while simultaneously managing the impact on taxpayers. I recognize that a statement of interest is the first step to see if the MSBA will accept Shrewsbury into their program. However, for me, it is not just non-binding. By saying yes now, I am making a commitment to see this project through to the end. It means that if the MSBA says yes, that I have signaled my commitment to form a building committee, dedicate funds to design work, and eventually ask the voters to support a high school renovation and expansion at close to the same time that I will be asking for support of an operational override. Both asks are critically important, but my priority is the override, which provides the ability to continue school and town operations as we experience them today. As someone who has supported several school building projects in both overrides, this is a difficult decision to make. The school committee and school department staff have built a strong case for the prioritization of this building project. It is clearly needed. It is with great difficulty, though, that I must vote no for this year's submission cycle.
Thank you, Mrs. Casavan. We've all made extensive statements, but we've all now had the opportunity to hear each other's comments. Does anyone have anything additional to say? All right, if not, let's proceed to a motion.
I think we need to take a motion first, yes or no, and then if we have majority, then there's a required motion of yes. That's a long read.
Okay. So we'll start with the first motion, which would be to, let me get to the right one, authorize the superintendent of schools to submit the statement of interest to the Massachusetts School Building Authority.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, so this requires a roll call vote. Casavan?
No.
Samia?
Yes.
Conlin?
Yes.
Garcia?
Yes.
And Flynn, no. The motion carries.
So now there's a second required motion, if yes. Having convened in an open meeting on April 9, 2024, prior to the SOI submission closing date, the Shrewsbury Select Board of Shrewsbury, Massachusetts, in accordance with its charter, bylaws, and ordinances, has voted to authorize the superintendent to submit to the Massachusetts School Building Authority the statement of interest form dated April 2024 for Shrewsbury High School located at 75 Cypress Avenue, which describes and explains the following deficiencies and priority categories for which an application may be submitted to the Massachusetts School Building Authority in the future. To alleviate persistent severe overcrowding, priority number two. To replace and modernize the school's roof and HVAC systems, which are near end-of-life, and install new, energy-efficient systems, priority number five. To provide in addition to the school so that a full range of programs, including technical training via innovation pathways programs and/or Chapter 74 vocational/technical programs, priority number seven. And hereby fully specifically acknowledges that by submitting the statement of interest form, the Massachusetts School Building Authority in no way guarantees the acceptance or the approval of an application, the awarding of a grant, or any other funding commitment from the Massachusetts School Building Authority or commits the town of Shrewsbury to filing an application for funding with the Massachusetts School Building Authority.
Second.
This requires a roll call vote. Casavan?
No.
Samia?
Yes.
Conlin?
Yes.
Garcia?
Yes.
And Flynn, no. The motion carries. Item number 12 is to review and act on the recommendation from Selco for the streetlight request of Smita Anthony, 45 Cypress Avenue, for a streetlight in the vicinity of 45 Cypress Avenue. This request appeared before the board on February 13. The board voted to send the request to Selco. Selco has now recommended to install one LED underground streetlight, and we now need to approve that.
Fantastic. I move the board approve the recommendation from Selco for the streetlight request from Smita Anthony, 45 Cypress Avenue.
Second.
Okay. Proceed to a roll call vote. Casavan?
Aye.
Samia?
Aye.
Conlin?
Aye.
Garcia?
Aye.
And Flynn, aye. So voted. Item number 12 is to review and act on the donation bin permit application for Scrub-a-Dub Auto Wash Centers, Inc., DBA Scrub-a-Dub Car Wash Shrewsbury for one donation bin located at 509 Boston Turnpike, pursuant to Article 25 of the general bylaws.
I move that the board approve the permit application from Scrub-a-Dub Car Wash Shrewsbury for one donation bin located at 509 Boston Turnpike.
Second.
Okay, proceed to a roll call vote. Casavan?
Aye.
Samia?
Aye.
Conlin?
Aye.
Garcia?
Aye.
Flynn, aye. So voted. Item number 14 is to review and act on the open meeting law complaint from Patrick Higgins and Associates, submitted on, I'm sorry, March 31, 2024.
Madam Chair,
Yes.
as an employee of the Massachusetts Attorney General's Office, I will be recusing myself from this vote.
Thank you, Mr. Garcia. So by way of background, this complaint alleges that we did not accept the meeting minutes of our February 6, 2024 workshop or February 8, 2024 roundtable within three meetings or 30 days as required by open meeting law. We approved the February 6, 2024 workshop meeting minutes on March 12, which was not within the required timeline. We posted the video of the February 8 roundtable but did not accept meeting minutes prior to this evening. So also not within the required timeline. We have taken action to remind town staff that all meeting minutes must be provided to the board for approval within three meetings or 30 days, whichever is later. Board members, we are required to respond to the complaint in writing, so I will entertain a motion to authorize the town manager to respond to the open meeting law complaint from Patrick Higgins and Associates filed on March 31, 2024.
So moved.
Second.
This requires a roll call vote. Casavan?
Aye.
Samia?
Aye.
Conlin?
Aye.
And Flynn, aye. So voted. Next, we will move to correspondence. Item number 15 is, sorry, item number 15 is an email dated March 23, 2024, from Roberta Tucker, 725 Main Street, regarding new requirements for specific recycle bins for Castello Waste Removal Company. So noted. Item number 16 is a letter received March 27, 2024, from Scott Nolan, 20 Bossworth Road, regarding GFI Clinton Street Project. So noted. The board has responded to Mr. Nolan. Item number 17 is a letter dated April 1, 2024, from attorney Mark L. Donahue Fletcher Tilton on behalf of Saxton Partners LLC, regarding 104 Main Street slash 328 North Sigeman Avenue. So noted. This is under review by staff. And item number 18 is an email dated April 4, 2024, from Representative Hannah Kane regarding Chapter 90 funding. So noted. Representative Kane writes that under the Chapter 90 provisions of House Bill 4529, Shrewsbury is scheduled to receive 986,757 in road and bridge funding for fiscal year '25. This bill now moves to the Senate for its consideration. And lastly, items 19 through 24 are ZBA decisions. So noted. That concludes our agenda. If there is not anything else to come before the board, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
And this fortunately will be our last roll call of the evening. Casavan?
Aye.
Samia?
Aye.
Conlin?
Aye.
Garcia?
Aye.
And Flynn, aye. So voted. This meeting is adjourned.